Newport City Council Regular Meeting is called to order at 6:35 p.m. Council members present, President John Wilson, Kevin Chabino, Chris Fashon, Clark Curtis, staff member, City Clerk and Treasurer James Johnson is here, Programs Director Rebecca Terion, additional members, staff members, Michael Brown Recreation Director, Police Chief Travis Brigham, Interim Fire Chief Kevin LaCrosse. I know I saw some other people here, I just can't see because. Frank Chaney needs to put his foot in the. Frank Chaney, anybody else am I missing? I don't, I apologize if I don't see you. Next item on the agenda, additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda.
On item seventeen, I'd like to delete that.
So you make the motion?
Yes. I'll make the motion on item seventeen being deleted. I thought it's so timely.
For this position?
For seventeen.
For the Programs Director?
No, I have it, I was sixteen, I'm talking seventeen.
Oh, well, okay, but some of these things are gonna change, so that's why. Okay, that's okay. So there's, okay, so bear with me one second, because this is an interview. Councilman, you want to delete the interview?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we adding applications, has it been posted yet?
Well, we will discuss it when we get there, but it's that the official has not been posted, but people inside are allowed to apply. And other people who know about it are allowed to apply. So if we have some candidates, that's why it's an interview. So I have a motion to delete item seventeen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it. And.
Madam Mayor, it was three to one?
Yes. And seventeen is deleted.
Can you use the mic, please?
Yes.
We continue. I'm gonna stop that discussion.
I'm gonna repeat it, so they can hear me. Okay. So on the original agenda, there was a motion to delete item seventeen. It was seconded, there were three ayes, and the motion is carried. Okay. So, any councilmen, any other additions, deletions? Okay, President Wilson?
No.
Clinton Curtis?
Nothing.
Okay, I actually have two. I would like to move to add the following item to the agenda after item sixteen. Control the Programs Director Appointment. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a.
Who's made the motion?
I am. Yes, and it's quite all right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. I have another addition. I'd like to move to add the following item to the agenda immediately before new business. It's the signature authorization for C.A. 0679 Amendment, Newport City S.T.B.P. 2211, the Wayfinding Signage Grant. I have a motion for that signature authorization. Do I have a second?
I'll second, I don't know what it is, we can just discuss it.
Sure. I have a motion and a second. There, this particular amendment for this grant was brought about several years ago by the former city manager, so we need, it's due to be signed now, and I just need to be able to get authorization, because it's, it started out with a prior city manager, so we have to change the authorization to sign this signature page that goes through. So, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, could the mic be raised up a little bit in sound? Because we're having trouble hearing it.
Because I need some talk?
Can we raise the volume?
Raise the volume. Oh, I thought you, I thought you were giving me height access.
Is there a way of making it louder?
Speaker. Testing, better? Next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of October sixteen, 2023, and October twenty-three, 2023. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of October sixteen, 2023.
Just the October sixteen, or and the October twenty-three, 2023? Both or one?
No.
It's up to you?
No, I'll do it separate.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the minutes for October sixteen, 2023. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Let me come. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. Do I have a motion to now approve the minutes of October twenty-three, 2023?
I move to approve the minutes of the Special Council Meeting of October twenty-third, 2023.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, and the motion is carried for both units. Okay, we, now, this is going into comments by the public. We're going to be opening up the floor to public comment for each agenda item. Members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present, and that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel. Members of the audience are further advised and reminded that Newport City Council meetings are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City Council meetings are the only time the City Council discusses, deliberates, and decides upon city matters. City Council meetings are held in public to promote transparency and accountability in government, but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings, and that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the City Council. To conduct orderly and efficient meetings, I kindly request the public's cooperation and compliance with the published guidelines when participating in the meeting. Thank you. So we're now going to comments by the public. When your name is called, please speak into the microphone. State your name and residence and your affiliation. You will have two minutes for your comments. Mr. Walsh.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jay Walsh, resident of Newport-Vermont. At the last meeting, last council meeting, Ms. Beurling made an account of the removal of political signs, which, the details of such she could only have gotten by a long conversation with the interim city manager, and we're totally wrong. In her own words, if you're going to go after someone's conduct, you really have to get the facts straight, present them in a straight and transparent and honest way. So to be transparent, Ms. Beurling failed to point out that the candidate signs were not removed once, but twice. Friday, July twenty-eighth, and then again Monday, thirty-first, just two days before the election. She also failed to point out that Ms. Garrity only sent out the email to Mr. Bernier following the first removal of the signs in response to my email to Ms. Garrity informing her that the sign removal was a violation of state policy and law. Simply check the email dates and you'll see that I'm correct. And based on a tip from a citizen as to the whereabouts of the signs that were removed, I informed the candidates as to where their signs could be found, tossed next to the dumpster at the city maintenance building. None of the candidates I spoke to that morning had received any calls from the city at that time. In addition, Ms. Beurling also stated that I publicly accused the interim city manager of intentionally having the signs removed, and then went on to make the point by stating intentionally four or five times. I never said this, nor publicly implied that she did so intentionally. This accusation made me reread my email correspondence with the interim city manager, only to find Ms. Garrity supplied to me in reference to the sign removal, where she stated, "The city's Public Works employees were following my directive." I'm no linguist, but the words directive and intention both pertain to guidance and purpose behind an action or decision. And while the council stated that signs on city property should be removed per the city ordinance, the city ordinance clearly states that the road right-of-way is not deemed city property, yet all the candidate signs were removed from the road right-of-way throughout the city, specifically the Causeway and elsewhere. Ms. Beurling's account of the sign removal totally misrepresents the facts. The candidate's political signs are right of free speech, and it seems hypocritical to me that Ms. Beurling would marginalize this right of free speech, as so many men and women have fought and died for this right. As well, she herself personally benefits from this right of free speech. In many other countries, if she were to rail against the government officials as she has done here for months, she would be jailed, or worse. It is disturbing to me that she would mock my defense of candidates' constitutional rights, as the first line of the oath that she took to be a lawyer is, "I do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States." Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next item on the agenda is the Extra Mile Day Proclamation.
Can I just ask one question?
Oh, I apologize.
It's just because I was noticing the last couple minutes there's fluctuation of people online. Is there a procedure in place for them to, I don't think anybody has comments tonight, but is there a procedure in place for them to ask to be put on?
Yes, they can email, some people have emailed me, and we do put them on, and then sometimes they email and say, "Take me off." Okay.
Not in there? I'm not on the list, but can I respond?
No.
No.
So we're on Extra Mile Day proclamation. A hero doesn't have to be someone from a superhero comic. It can be any ordinary person or organization that one respects and looks up to. Even the little things can make someone a hero. Just by being there for someone, or giving someone a friendly ear when they need it can make you someone's hero. Simply put, the key to heroism is a concern for other people, people in need, and taking action without expectation of a reward. Heroes embark on a quest or a journey, often facing trials and tribulations, to achieve a goal or overcome an obstacle. They often possess noble qualities, such as courage, selflessness, and desire to help others. So to all our heroes, I thank you, our firefighters, our law enforcement, our emergency medical services and providers, our veterans and their families, our moms, our dads, our sisters, our brothers, our role models, and to all of you, our Newport City citizens, and our city employees and volunteers. And I would like to read, please, the Extra Mile Day proclamation. Whereas, the city of Newport is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas, the city of Newport is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And, whereas, the city of Newport is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas, the city of Newport acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra-mile cities in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November one, 2023. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Newport-Vermont, do hereby proclaim November one, 2023, to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take time on that day, and this day, to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. And I signed that, and I submitted it to the Extra Mile American Organization. However, remember I had asked the community, and I went public asking people to recommend, we were only allowed to pick three, extra-mile heroes who will now be up on the website for the entire month of November. And so I would like to announce who was chosen. Andrea Carbine and Veronica Rancoin, I hope I'm pronouncing their names correctly, who joined forces to create a free summer concert series in 2017 called Wednesdays on the Waterfront. Wow. An amazing event that does so much for Newport City. Second, the VFW Post 798 and Auxiliary, who not only hold ceremonies, provide Thanksgiving, Christmas, and Easter community meals, Halloween trunk-or-treat, veteran barbecues, dances for the community, but also build ramps for disabled veterans, and so much more. And finally, last but not least, Diane Peel, founder, organizer, and all-around everything woman for the community mesh. So it's definitely a day to clap for these individuals and organizations who do go that extra mile to make the world a bit better for the rest of us. So I'd like to give them a round of applause. Thank you. And I'd like to thank them. And once again, I'd like to thank all of you out there, because all of Newport is really heroic. Next item on the agenda?
Madam Mayor.
Oh, I apologize, yes.
How many candidates did you receive, and who chose?
So how many did I choose?
You chose, no, you chose three. Who chose, and how many did you have? How many nominations?
So I chose, I received nominations, I received about six. Six official ones. And then I got them from the public, I got them from council members, and the ones I got from the public, actually, one I got through an email, and then one came to the mayor's meeting. Some of them were duplicates, you know, so two or three people doing an organization, so you were only allowed X, so you couldn't, you couldn't choose. The next item on the agenda, senior housing presentation by Abby Ackberger. You have.
You want me here or there?
I want you to be wherever you're most comfortable, as long as they can hear you, and you can hear me say, "Stop."
Don't worry, I've practiced. But first, about your volunteer stuff, you forgot to mention yourself. Don't forget that you people are also volunteers and put above and beyond, so I think that, don't forget to give yourself kudos as well.
Thank you, thank you.
So what I want to say is, first of all, as you probably all know, we have a general crisis for senior housing, not only in the NEK per se, but Newport. Lot of seniors are having, struggling, and are having problems. We've started to try our project out in 2018, and we believed that the project would consist of seventy nonprofit assisted living units. We would have seventy individual senior apartments, and they would have services, a la carte services whenever they'd need any. At the far end of the property, we would have independent bungalows for some seniors. And hopefully, at the very end of the project, we would also like to have a nonprofit, long-term memory care slash nursing home. And reason where we are thinking about that as well is because nursing homes are closing down, the ones that are for profit because of the high cost of living, and the only way that they can make ends meet at this point is by reducing staff, or maybe their philemonions are smaller, and so on. The key to all of this is affordability, and that's very challenging right now, because everything is going up the way it does. However, our project would create over a hundred jobs, full-time, part-time jobs, would create a hundred and seventy senior housing units, would create additional housing for other people, because a lot of these seniors would be selling their homes. And what that would mean is that it might reduce a little bit the cost of houses, because they might not be brand-new houses, so more people could afford those as well. The other thing is, it would free up hospital beds, and, you know, when they have to keep people in hospitals, because there's nowhere else to put them, and hospital beds are very expensive, I'm sure they cost over eight hundred dollars a day. And the other one that's important to everybody here as well is it would generate more revenue for Newport. Generate more revenue for Newport. Remember that one. So coming back down to making it affordable. So one of the ways to offset the rising costs is, we need the help from the city. In the past, they said, "We're behind you, rah-rah," and that's simply not enough. We need, we desperately need one of you council members to be on our board. And when I was speaking with the mayor several weeks ago, she was talking about conflict of interest, and again, it's probably a debatable thing, and maybe the caveat is not so much being a board member, but being involved. There's no competition. If ever a board member, if ever one of you decided to be a board member, and there was another nonprofit senior housing that would come around, you could always, you know, remove yourself from the board. So one of the big reasons is because, as you probably know, talk is cheap sometimes, and just saying rah-rah is not enough. And one of the big reasons for this is because there are a lot of grants that are available to us through the city. And give you example would be the municipal block grant, and that is highly competitive, but it's worth a lot of money. Then there are some non-competitive ones, the CWSRF, the CLSRF. And there's residual money from the EP5 money that was given, and we got a letter saying that whatever council wants, you can probably orchestrate where that money should go. And of course, we'd like it in ARPA's, because it would help us out tremendously. There are other grants. ARPA has some money, and there's housing parts that have some money as well. And the more we get that way, the more we could diminish some costs. The other thing is, while our two principal buildings, the heart of the place, and mainly the affordable housing part, would have, you know, a meal plan, they would have most of the staff, so the nursing, restaurant, if you want to call it that, medical, recreation, and so that's why, that's where we could diminish costs. We can make it more affordable by the people in the apartment buildings, because right now, if you went to a retirement home, you're looking at six thousand dollars a month. And not a lot of us can afford six thousand dollars a month. So that's the other part of it. We also need donations, and people, I'll give you the example here, Fred's Energy out of this project would be getting more than a million dollars of profit. So would Casella and some others. So we would like, again, to put a little bit of pressure for their generosity, and knowing that we are nonprofit and we have a 501(c)(3), it would be tax-free. The other part that we could really appreciate would be putting a little pressure on the reluctant rural edge. And the reason is because we probably need to build a little bit of additional housing for hard-to-come-by staff. How do you lure staff to do some of this work? And we figured that if we would do subsidized free housing for them, it might help. We have a lot of solutions for some of these problems. A few years ago, when we were looking at all of this, we had investors say, "Never again in Newport." And I think that if we put our heads together and our hearts into it, I think they will say yes to Newport. So please, please, you know, give us a hand on this. And if you have any questions, I'm sure that the mayor knows how to reach me, or call me at Hearing Center of Vermont, and I'll answer the phone, and I'll help whichever way I can. But if all things go well, we could even start at least a bungalows in the spring. This is how fast we can get things done. So we need extra board members. I'm not a very good bureaucrat. I really am not good doing meetings like you guys do, so we could, we could use some help in that respect, too.
How many minutes, was that good?
It did well.
Thank you, wait for that. Any comments, any questions? Counsel? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the IT contract with an anticipated vote. I would ask for a motion to, from the council, to approve and enter into the IT contract with Beloitene Computing. Do you have that in your pocket? Do I have a motion?
I want to accept the IT contract from Beloitene Computing?
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comment? Any comment? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried.
Madam Mayor, what are the terms of the contract? Is it a copy online?
Thank you. So, the contract actually, Beloit Computing was with us prior and it's more of a renewal. And there's a slight increase in the contract price, but it was, it's minimal. And the contractor has not had an increase for a long time, but the contract about handling the workstation support, network support and devices, antivirus support and all of those IT situations that your mayor...
What is it, Madam Mayor? What is this slight increase?
I believe it's two thousand, maybe a little less, about two thousand.
Yeah, and there are additional hours now, so...
Right. So, approximately two thousand dollars.
How many additional hours?
I would say it was twenty hours.
Twenty.
You said they were with you prior?
Yes.
Was there a gap or is this just renewal of the contract?
No, it's just up for renewal.
For how long?
So, this particular contract is going to go for the twelve months?
Till November thirtieth, 2024.
Which was corrected by our president, thank you for that.
He had November thirty-first, so he had to come.
So, this will also cover, like, you know, the office email accounts and things like that. Hopefully viruses and we'll give you a copy. Ready?
Is that good? I just give Chris Michael.
Yeah, sure. Yes, I just... Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is VLCT Passive PACIF Insurance Renewal with an Anticipated So, do I have a motion for the council to approve and enter into the VLCT PACIF Insurance Contract Renewal?
I move to accept or move into the VLCT Passive Insurance Renewal.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comment? Discussion by the council?
No, I just want the mayor to sign.
Do you want...
We do this every year.
Right, I just want to make sure that nobody has anything that they want to say. Do you want to add anything or...
I'm just saying, the application's been filled out and sent in already. It was due on, it was about four... Get it every year, they send property lists, vehicle lists, they send them up to department and they add the lead for a hundred a week, change the values. I think there was a question on the uninsured motorists part. They moved the cap down to two hundred and fifty thousand. You can go up to ten million, but the council has to specify you want to do that. If you go to ten million, it's going to cost you another four hundred dollars approximately. Basically, that, if they're getting an accident uninsured motorists, they're going to get workers' comp, it's basically a supplement, it's what it is. You'll have to decide if you want to do any more than that. It'll cost that.
Extra money for it. Good?
And to authorize you to sign it.
Yeah.
Right. But I just want to make sure that there's nobody else that has anything to add. So, we have a motion to approve, which is going to be on the second, which is going to be our first motion, okay? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Motion is carried. Now, I need a motion for the authorization for the mayor to sign that contract.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any? I see my husband. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. And the motion is carried for the authorization to sign. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of a health safety officer with an anticipated Can I have a motion to appoint a health safety officer or the designated officer if someone is not in place at this time, for example? And when we get into the discussion, I'll explain it a little bit further. But at least a motion to appoint and then we can always amend if necessary.
So, does somebody mind?
Well, no, what happens is right now, it's usually designated to say the fire chief or to, you know, zoning administrator or somebody like that. But right now, we're in an interim phase, so I would like at least the, not let it go so we have to do it again, so that this way we can say the fire, the interim fire chief or then the fire chief as it so proceeds. So, do I have a motion for appointment of a health and safety officer?
I'll make the motion for the appointment of a health and safety officer.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion for appointment and a second. I just wanted to let everybody know, because I'm bringing it back for discussion here now, that the state does designate somebody right now and so it's important that we get somebody out there who's put there. Okay, so, I have a motion for an appointment. I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Eyes have it. Motion is carried. Can I have a second motion designating that appointment temporarily to be to the fire department? Or is the interim fire chief to then move to the fire chief, once there's such an appointment?
It's the interim fire chief, willing.
With all due respect, Madam Mayor, no, thank you.
Okay, no, that's all fair. That's all fair. But I just want them to know that there needs to be an interim movement before it gets someplace, okay? So...
If I may, may I just...
Sure. Of course.
My understanding is it does not have to be somebody from the fire department. It could be...
Absolutely.
It could be, a lot of towns, but what's...
It could also be volunteer. That's exactly right and we're getting there and I appreciate that. But I had to try.
Fair enough.
So, what are you doing for the next six months? So, okay, so, right now...
I just, if I may...
Sure.
So, who's serving as our safety officer now?
Okay, so...
I don't know, I'm asking.
Me.
Is that a problem?
No, well, it's a problem because I'm not going to continue to do it. But, so, that's what, what happens is I'm a placeholder.
It sounded like it was, we didn't have a safety officer.
No, no, it's, everything's under control, but right now, we have a placeholder, so I was just trying to upgrade the placeholder with somebody more qualified.
I was just wondering if somebody's in there or not.
No, we don't have any vacancies. We totally have it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we have the motion passed that we can appoint. We'll deal with that when we move on at this point in time until we figure out who it's going to be.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
What type of qualifications do you look for or are required to look for in a self and safety officer?
So, pretty much, the person goes eventually, once they're appointed, they go for a short training.
Where?
Through the state has a training, but it's not that, the requirements are not that in depth. But you do get training and, you know, the state comes in. Or the state can actually come in and appoint their own officer if we do not provide one. So, right now, it was more prudent to accept the interim position. In fact, I have a certificate.
And you've taken the training?
No, actually, I just woke up and found this in the mail. You have to take the training after the appointment.
So, you get, you get the certificate before the training?
Just, oh, the certificate says that you are, yes. The certificate says you are appointed and then you go with the training.
And graduates?
I don't want it to say.
That'll teach you in... No, so anyway, so we know, we have the position, there is somebody sitting in there. And I have to tell you that everybody within the city, the city employees, when we have issues, they're helping and they're going and everything's being taken care of. And we're going to move on now. Discussion of, can I have a motion on the dis... Oh, I apologize, I didn't see Trish.
I'm sorry, I was just, so it's still going to be you, Madam Mayor, for now?
Right.
Until somebody else.
You want it?
I don't live in Newport either.
That's a matter, you do not have to live in Newport.
I'm scared.
You can be my deputy. So, the next item on the agenda is discussion of appointment of the E911 coordinator. That's fine. Do I have a motion to assign this position to the zoning lister position?
What'd she say?
Yeah.
Is that something that this person wants?
Well, it's something that they, is recommended, that's an, the state thinks that that is an ideal place for it. Right now, do you have a problem with that?
I didn't quite hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, what we're asking for right now is to designate the E911 coordinator into your department as a zoning lister for right now.
Kevin? You ever been to know that?
I'm good, it's all yours, Frank. Have fun.
Or interim. Are you good with that?
Fine.
Thank you. Thank you. So, may I have a motion? Really, thank you. May I have a motion for the appointment of the E911 coordinator to the zoning lister position?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comment? Any further discussion by the council? So, thank you and just so that you know, I was that one also, appointed me, so I am going to give you that certificate. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried. Next item, discussion regarding bids from VLCT and Corey Parent and/or his company, Leo nine Public Affairs with an anticipated vote. Can I have, well, I guess we should have some discussion, but can I have a motion to discuss that to start? Motion to start the discussion.
How can I make another motion?
Because I'm looking your way.
Sure. I'll make the motion to open discussions regarding bids from VLCT and Corey Parent from Leo nine Public Affairs.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments in the public? Okay, so, comments coming back here to the council. I would like to point out that Corey Parent's company does actual work for VLCT and VLCT has confirmed that they do use them a lot of the times to do their contracts. So, I had spoken to Mr. Parent prior to VLCT and we've already made a decision at the last council meeting to use VLCT or someone else. But because we have spoken to Mr. Parent prior, his bid will be like half the price. So, you don't have to pay the additional monies if you used VLCT directly and then they retained his company. So, and everybody's aware of it, so there's no issue. So, if you just look through both of the contracts and make a decision and then we can make a motion for who you would like to use.
Is that the only company that VLCT uses?
That is the one that they've used for the Northeast Kingdom, so yes, that's what I've been told. Or they may hire somebody else and VLCT will give us an additional package, but it will be through VLCT. The reason we're allowed to consider Mr. Parent's company is because I had contacted him first, not knowing, you know, when we were first all looking. So, he was one of the companies that we contacted. So, VLCT, Mr. Ted Brady was fine and he understood that. So, it's not like we went to VLCT, found out who they used and said, "Let's go in, find Mr. Parent." I had spoken to Mr. Parent first. And then the president and I actually had meetings with VLCT, talked about a lot of other things as well and they identified that they do this as well. So, you just have the opportunity to do this or you can just use VLCT? It's your choice. That's why we're having this discussion.
We couldn't use them previously because they already had three going out prior to act, so now they have openings. My general preference would be go, go through the league of citizen towns because they're our insurance carrier, they do the training, they know what we need and what they need. But what I'm hearing from you is that they in turn will just subcontract Leo nine? And we got to the league?
To both.
And they said that they would subcontract.
Right. So, we identified that, you know, I identified that to the league, to Mr. Brady. But you can still go, if you would rather have the oversight by VLCT, that's your choice as well, so...
My feeling kind of reflects, Kevin, that VLCT provides the city insurance and also if we go with them, they'll become kind of overarching umbrella so that maybe they go with Leo nine or maybe they have other help sources.
Correct.
So, my feeling is VLCT.
Okay. We're discussing, then we'll have to go.
I mean, that's my inclination as well. Since a, ultimately, well, you know, whoever the city manager is will always refer to the league for questions or answers or training. And in my mind, it makes sense that it would be somebody that they're comfortable with, knowing what they need as their insurance carrier. That's where I look at it.
I didn't think about that, the kind of instant access for the candidate or the person that has decided upon to have all the training listed right there from VLCT so they have the process right there.
Well, the training actually is after the fact.
Right. But then you have, like, that connection already to, like, this is what we provide as well.
And the city is members, you know, so everybody's a member, council members, et cetera.
And do they give a timeframe of how long they would recruit for us?
We, we'll set the parameters with them.
For either one of them?
Mm-hmm, yes.
There does seem to be a timetable on the bottom of the first page of the VLCT recruitment bid.
And they're going to actually work to, you know, update the contract with us if we need, you know, so... But the dollar amount is the cap dollar, so that is the main thing, shy of an expense here or there. Councilman, do you have any thoughts?
Probably the league.
Okay.
Of course.
Okay, so, can I... Okay, so can I have a motion then? To sign a contract with VLCT?
I move to approve the recruitment bid from VLCT to sign the contract.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, comments, yes?
So, this has to do with the advertising for the city manager position.
Yes, ma'am.
So, in some cases, a company like that, or Vermont League of Cities and Towns, would, we might pay them a certain amount, like, per the number of people that apply, or whatever the situation is. What if you've already received an application prior to this?
They would be excluded.
They will be excluded, okay.
Could they still apply through VLCT?
They can if they want to apply anyways.
Okay.
But it's almost like if we were on a real state broker, and we said, "Hey, these are our people, you don't get to get the percentage." But you can exclude them, but they can also go right through, we could tell them to go through VLCT, and, you know, go that route as well. Yes.
I guess I'm a little confused. So, correct, get it wrong. So, if, if you go with VLCT, let's say for $10,000, and they're gonna subcontract, contract it out to Corey Parent for $5,000, and it's gonna, you're gonna have the same person doing it regardless. Why would we spend twice the money? I just, I don't understand that. Maybe, maybe I'm not following the whole thing.
So, I think that council, and please jump in if I misstate this. I think what the council members are saying is that because of all of the other broad services that we use with VLCT and the insurance, et cetera, that if they do go and decide that they are going to use their subcontractor, that it's just like a carve-out, but it's more, they're more comfortable going with the big umbrella picture, which means that it may not cost that total amount anyway, if they find somebody sooner, and so on like that. But I think they're just comfortable with VLCT. But as, you know, as I said, because I had reached out prior to Mr. Parent, is why we were able to carve that out, so. Okay, so, I have a motion, I have a second. Oh, I apologize, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I just would like to ask a question. If somebody applies, not going through VLCT, does VLCT still do the vetting? Because aren't they doing the vetting for you?
Yes, that will happen, that's exactly what will happen now. They will be told to go through VLCT unless they have already applied.
Okay, so, let's say I've already applied.
Yes.
Okay, so, VLCT is not going to vet me. I'm gonna be, I approach the council with absolutely no vetting?
So, what'll happen is, they will do the vetting for us, but you'd still be, if you had applied, and we had put you on the agenda now to have your interview, it would have been a done deal, that you've just gone through the interview. However, now, we would tell you, please go and submit your application through VLCT. Okay? So, that, and I'm sorry if it wasn't clear, okay? So, the motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes.
Second.
Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next item is the council department liaison discussion. Can I have a motion to have a discussion regarding council liaisons to department heads in the city?
I'll make the discussion. To go ahead and have discussion on council liaison.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any comment? Yes.
I know I'm gonna be a lot tonight, but I just wanted to say that when I was mayor, and prior to that, and after that, we always had department license from the council. It seemed to be a better flow, because somebody was always in touch with a department to work with them, and they could fill the council in on a regular basis. I don't know when that ever changed, but it worked great when I was mayor, and I know it continued for several years after that. I don't know when it changed, but I'm, I'm 100% for this.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. Discussion.
I'm, I'm just thinking the opposite. Since you and John have your weekly meetings and everything, I, I wonder if having liaisons would be a little bit redundant.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any idea why it was terminated before? I mean, there were probably reasons for it, and I guess my concern would be that maybe it didn't work so well. You know, so, has anybody investigated as to why it was terminated?
So, that's where we're going with the discussion. Well, so, before, I'm gonna, I just wanted to answer. So, that's where we're going with those questions on the discussion, so your question is, so I may be addressed, so, okay.
When I first got on the council, back in 1997, we had liaisons. And I, when I was on the rec department, I was a liaison to the rec department. And for some reason, it was decided the following year not to have them. I don't remember the exact reasons, but I thought it worked well, 'cause I was, I was the liaison to the rec department. So, I'm not sure, I honestly don't remember why, but, but to answer Charlie's questions, it was back probably in 1998, or 99, that they discontinued doing it. I don't know if it's because council members felt, I don't know, uncomfortable being liaisons. I just honestly, I don't remember the exact reasoning, but that's the timeframe when it stopped. It was around 1998, 99.
Thank you for that information, just, and then I will come to you, yes.
My memory, and correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, is when Jacques Robert came back on the council with Vince, whatever his name is, I'm blocking his name, and Neil Morissette, Jacques Robert proposed it started again, liaisons were appointed. There was some debate around that, but, but it did happen. And then there was the mass exodus of council members, because one didn't get re-elected, so the other two had a hissy fit and left, and that was the end of it, right?
You're probably right, I didn't, forgot about that.
You were mayor then.
Yeah, right, but I forgot about.
Do you remember?
That was a mass exodus, and we probably just tried to get the council back on track.
Right, and the liaison piece just fell by the wayside. It wasn't that it wasn't working, it did work. In fact, John, you were involved there.
Right, hold on, I just wanted to get Trish, Trish. Do you wanna ask a question now, or you wanna wait till later?
I just wondered if, as part of your discussion, would you say what the liaison is and what they do?
Yes, thanks. Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the council. So, we have lots of good questions, and we've got lots of good information. Ms. Bierling came up with her question, some of it was answered, and Mr. Monat answered it, and Mr. Pronto gave some insight, and Ms. Ladd just gave us some more insight. So, has anybody been here during the liaison timeframe? And so, I'm going to let you take the lead, President. Talk them a little bit about it.
It started when Robert came back on to the council, and they appointed me, like, with the fire department. And all we did, and we had our department, and whenever they'd have their annual meeting, well, not annual, monthly meeting, stuff like that, we were always there. Because sometimes, you know, they're not coming to the council with a problem, but when they're sitting in their own little businesses in office, you, you come up with stuff, and we could bring it back to the council. So, then there seems to be a problem here, or, and then we could act on it. And it, it went well to the mass exodus. And then, there was a scramble to even come up with a council, a council that night, because in theory, I was the only one in the city that was on the council. But Mr. Johnson called the state, and we immediately swore the mayor and Mr. Shinet back in, so that at least we had three people, 'cause I didn't want to be the dictator. But when we brought and formed a new council, it, it just kind of died, it went away. Is it a good idea? I think it is, because, you know, nobody goes to the fire department, or nobody goes to Public Works when they have their meetings. They're not gonna come and tell us their problems, there's a rule, but if you're sitting there. And one good thing, and I see you've already.
He's a suggestion, so you don't get to peek, yeah.
Because, well, I don't know if you eat well, but when I used to go to the fire department, I always ate well.
I was like, you wanted to see if you were on the.
When one chief left, and then the next one come on board, eh, it wasn't the funniest environment, so I think I was the only one who was going to the liaison meetings, and I, I'm not into this crap. But I think it is important, because you can pick up stuff, and, you know, if Chris has got the fire department, I mean, the police department, and they have issues, well, we don't know about it, and usually most bosses are never gonna come up and tell you there's a weakness, or there's a problem here. But with a liaison, and we, we have no, no real power, we just go, and if you can pick it up quick, maybe solve the problem before they fester up and get worse.
So, I'm going to speak to Trish's issue, but I first want to address Heidi. On your question, comparing it to the mayor's hours, entirely different. The mayor's hours are open to the public to just come and speak. Of course, nobody's going to stop a department head from coming in, but that's usually business, so that's not the way it would happen. More, the mayor's hours are more open for the citizens to just come and ask questions, or tell us about what you're doing, like you did. So, it's an entirely different form.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, of course, I was just gonna go this way.
Charlie and I were on the council, we had liaisons, and we tried to rotate that every year, so everybody got a chance to, different departments, instead of being.
Excellent, right.
It works well, and you get a chance to be with every department.
And learn in this way, you're not just in the area that you know as well. And I'm trying to answer all your questions as we're going through this, Trish, so, but I will go further with that. Councilman, any thoughts about?
I like it.
You don't get to peek either.
You've already picked.
No, these, I don't recommend you do this. Any thoughts?
So, are we, I, I think it's a fine idea, it's just, are we assuming that councilmen will go to meetings during the daytime, or are we just checking in with department heads, or what's that?
You can check, if you, you should check in, you should not interfere with their business. It's merely collecting information, seeing if there's any issues that need to be brought to the council ahead of time, so that it's not something we find out later, maybe. Especially now, my thought was, we're getting ready to do the budget. This is the time we need to get information, more information from the department heads and with Mr. Terian, so that this way, we can hear what's going on, and we can share that information as the budget items are coming up. You may come back with no information, but it's not to do their job, it's not to interfere with their job, it's not to say, you know, "Oh, give me a hard hat, I'm going out on the site with you." It's not, it's not a ride-along, it's not during the day, right. Yeah, you can handle it however you like. You can just email and say, "Can you call me at a certain time?" So, it's pretty much just to be, to touch, to say, "What information do you have going on? Is there a point?" They may come up with a, a point that just needs to be stated.
Right.
Yeah, so.
And, and it goes the other way, too.
Exactly.
Many times I've gone to the meeting, and the chief would say, "Okay, Mr. Wilson, what's coming down from the council?" So, you're informing more, more than just the boss, who has 100 things going. You're telling all the firemen more. So, yeah, it works both ways, I think.
So, um.
We never did this one, 'cause it was only one person.
Okay, well, we're doing it now. Right, well, we don't have to go over this. So, I'm going to, I asked the programs director to kind of chat with me and decide, make pretty much the decision of who should go where, if she was more.
Suggestions.
Suggestions of who should go where, and this is not set in stone, especially now that I know somebody wants one, because they eat better. But right now, and she, Mr. Terian gave it really good thought, said, "Okay, this person, their field is this, perhaps they should go to this area and learn a different, you know, division, just like our treasurer just suggested, like rotated, so everybody learns." So, here are the suggested liaisons, and I'm just going to say them, because we'll vote on everything later. Recreation, Councilman Curtis. Public Works, Councilman Chauvin. Fire, Councilman Bouchon. Zoning and assessing, Councilman President Wilson, and the police would be the mayor. Just 'cause I'm gonna do the ride-along. So, those are suggestions. Does anybody, council members now have different thoughts of where they would like to shift? I'm not, I don't really care where it might go.
Sounds good to me, aye? Can I swap?
Absolutely. How much is the?
I'll swap with you.
Okay, so, hold on a second, okay.
You're assuming you know police business.
Yeah, no, it's fine, it's the reason why we do, no, but it's okay, it's fine.
No, I.
It's fine.
Nothing against public works, I'd rather start somewhere you know, and go there.
No, that's fine. Okay, so, if we were switching the police now, it would be Councilman Chauvin, and then I would go to Public Works unless somebody else wants to shift around.
No, it sounds like a good, a good food, so.
I know.
Darren, you have one comment, Chris, we've all gone to salads. I'll bring the steak.
Bring your own, don't worry.
Can I throw one thing out, though?
Sure, you can throw, sure.
One night while I'm over liaison with the fire department, the alert goes up, and Ed Newton said, "Hop in the truck, John." So, I'm, "Oh, this is pretty cool." We're heading for Coventry, and he said, "When you get to the intersection, push this button, 'cause that's the siren that clearly..." So, I did it, and I did it twice. I said, "This is pretty cool, man," I'm sitting up here, a pretend fireman. Got halfway to Coventry, and I push it again, and Ed looks at me, he said, "What the hell did you just do?" I said, "Making sure it still works." But, yeah.
Okay, so, can I, can I have a motion to appoint lia, council member liaisons to the various departments?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further comment? Any further discussion? Do you want me to say who is who now, and then repeat it, or are you? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried, and thank you to our programs director for being the wise one. The next item on the agenda is the EMS presentation. Mr. Charlie Pronto for the Newport ambulance.
And, yeah.
And Jeff, hello, Jeff, we have an everyone forming.
He's the more important one of the, but. One is up here. We can't use the same mic, 'cause he's a foot taller than I am. So, I had a two-part reason for being here. One is to kind of acquaint the council with Newport ambulance, what we do. Changes from last year, 'cause there have been changes, and there are always changes going on with us. And to discuss the budget. So, we'll get to the budget later. I want to talk a little bit about Newport ambulance, what we do. Since, since last.
Since, since last year, we have added another division. I'll be right about it in the papers, but we, we added Troy subdivision. We have a building there. We have fully 24/7 staff there. And we are, we have taken over from Azizkoi. So we now do Lowell, Westfield, Troy, North Troy and Jay. So about five years ago, we, we took on Derby, Morgan, Holland, Charleston, both east and west and Brighton. And 20 years ago, we took on Johnson, Hyde Park, Eden, Belvedere and Warden. So I don't even know, there's an awful lot of people that aren't aware where we cover. We cover now from Johnson to Brighton, which is, I think.
Sixteen towns, 667 square miles.
Do you hear that?
No.
Yeah. Sixteen towns, 667 square miles is what we cover. How many employees do we have now?
Seventy-five.
So we have 10 ambulances. What that enables us to do, we've also graduated from, I took this over 37 years ago when I was 12. As president of saying, how hard can this be? And it can't be that much work. And Bill Gilding handed me a checkbook with $40,000 and a license revocation from the state EMS saying they're pulling Newport ambulance services license. And he was done. So I went down, the ambulance looked like it had one leg instead of four. The medication was outdated. The state was pulling the license. And so that's where it was 37 years ago. The city police didn't even want to call the ambulance to go on calls with them. So it was in pretty, pretty much a disarray. So we've graduated now to one of the largest services in the state of Vermont. No volunteers. Well, we may have a few volunteers, but for the most part, everybody is paid. We have, it's at 75 employees. We have 10 ambulances. We have four stations. And we are at the paramed level, for the most part everywhere and gaining on that, which is huge importance, especially now that the hospital is not functioning as well as it used to. We don't have the staff, but I'm telling you, Jeff is a paramedic. You want a paramedic picking you if something's critical is going on and it's, it's a really big deal for us. But the level of care from 37 years ago till now is just unbelievable. So we're always gaining. The big problem that we have, for the most part, is keeping our people paid properly. Because we are a nonprofit. We serve the towns. And it's, it's just hard. I mean, we keep giving them raises and giving them raises. Then everybody else is getting raises and, you know, so they're backed down and, and it's, it's a big challenge for us. So, so that, that's pretty much, it's just, it's been a big, it's been a big trip. Jeff has been aboard for two of those expansions and he's absolutely amazing. He's the executive director. Most people, if you ask him who's, who runs Newport ambulance service, they're going to tell you Jeff Johansson. And that's the way I want it because Jeff Johansson does run Newport ambulance service. I'm just on, I'm on the board. I look at the budgets. I deal with funding. He calls me when there's a big problem, but all the little ones he takes care of is fantastic, so. So that's where we're at with that. So anything you want to add to that?
Just with our expansion, now that we have trucks, all of our trucks are GPS located. If Newport starts having multiple calls, we move our trucks in from other stations. So if you're ever driving up by Shaw's and you see a truck stationed at Shaw's or the Cal Palace or Hillikers, it's just because we're moving, you know, Troy truck goes out, we'll move another truck out there. If the Morgan truck goes out, we move a truck from Newport out there. Same thing that happens here. If Newport starts getting two or three calls, we'll move those trucks closer. So we just, we don't rely on mutual aid. We have our own mutual aid. We've got a great system in place, cuts down on response times. We move our trucks depending on where the call volume is.
One of the things that's a little unique to Newport City is when we started, we were in the, the Old Town Garage. Anybody knows what that was like? And we had to build a bed, a couple of bunk beds inside a garage. I mean, it was terrible. But that's, that's where the, where the people had, had to start. But so, so we, you know, we've come a long ways. If anybody, if you haven't been to the Bay, you ought to go and see it. It's, it's, we're all pretty proud of what we do. Questions, Amy?
Are you done?
I'm going to talk about budget.
Right. So you don't want the questions.
I'm done. I'm done.
I just wanted to say thank you. During COVID, you guys were terrific. We, we got our COVID shots there and because my mom lived in Canada, we had to do the COVID test every week and you guys were the absolute most reliable, nicest. And I, I just, from the bottom of my heart, really, really, really appreciate all the work you've done. So thank you.
Madam, just housekeeping for my, for my sake. If I may ask, Charlie, Ms. Soprano, you, you don't ask for mutual aid, but you provide mutual aid. Is that correct?
But doesn't mean that.
At the medical, what, oh, I'm sorry.
So it doesn't mean that we'll never rely on mutual aid. We just move trucks around to try to eliminate the delay in mutual aid. But, yeah, we will do mutual aid. We've, we actually just pulled numbers. I think we've done 20, 20-something to Orleans' area this year.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, we do paramedic intercepts all over. You know, if we had a big MCI, we're still part of the, you know, mutual aid, you know. If we need it, Orleans would come. But having the capacity of having, you know, six ambulances at our service, it limits the need for it.
May I have? I think I know the answer, but I know what.
Wait a second. I'll only ask the question if you know the answer. That's what it turns out to be.
Yes, of course. Good. Why don't you just explain what a medic interceptor is, for the sake of my story?
So what a paramedic does?
What, what a, you know, what a medic interceptor is?
So paramedic intercept is just if another service that needs a paramedic, we will go out and jump in their ambulance and provide them with a higher level of care. So if, you know, someone's having a major trauma and they need pain management or cardiac stabilization, we can go out and jump in their truck.
Let me just explain to them what equipment we do have in the ambulances. You could do that a whole lot better.
Yeah. So Newport ambulances, we're at the paramedic level in all the trucks. Doesn't mean we're staffed at the paramedic level. We've got six paramedics on staff in Newport. But all of our trucks have IV pumps. We do have three Lucas chest compression devices, which is, so if someone drops CPR instead of doing manual CPR, we have a machine that will actually do CPR, high-quality CPR for us. We have two ventilators so that if someone needs a breathing machine, we can breathe for them. We receive that through COVID money. We also have two of the six in the state high-flow nasal cannula devices. So if we have a pediatric, the RSV patient that's having severe difficulty breathing. Last year, RSV was really, really bad for the infant. The state of Vermont purchased six of these ventilators. Newport ambulance was fortunate enough to receive two of them, one here and one in Johnson.
Laura?
Yeah. So this is just a question. I didn't realize that Newport provided service in Johnson. Do you have a whole staff there?
We have a whole, whole ambulances, three ambulances down there stationed right across from Field Days.
Wow.
So, yeah.
Councilman?
I think, I shouldn't ask because I think I might know. Within our district, there are two other ambulances, all right? Orleans.
Glover.
Glover. They're, they're standalone.
Yeah. So what there used to be, when I first started 16 years ago, we were sitting at seven ambulance services in this district. And then, you know, reimbursements have been getting less and less. We get less and less money. So, you know, we need the call volume. We need to regionalize and Newport has regionalized. And it's sort of helped us, you know, going in, leading into Charlie's financials. You know, we've seen a 12% increase in our health insurance. We saw 20% in our workman's comp. We saw 20% in our normal insurance. Payroll, I mean, you up somebody $2 and then McDonald's ups them to the same thing. You know, we pay a paramedic, you know, $25, the hospital offers them 30. So it's a fight to try to keep good providers. So our costs have gone up, skyrocketed.
Those other two that are, that are standalone, one of them uses our dispatch, all right?
I believe so. Orleans uses our dispatch.
Glover's their own little world.
Yeah.
Who's still using the state. Okay.
I think everybody in the whole county except for Glover and I think Glover might be. I'm not sure.
Have we, have we received, been on the receiving end of mutual aid this year?
Potentially once. We were trying to figure it out, going through books. I believe at the beginning of the year, we got one. Since we've taken our Troy station on, we have not needed mutual aid. We've been able to move all of our trucks, which also helps with our income for the towns.
We've encompassed our mutual aid. So, and we, and knowing that, we, we've added staff to make sure that we, we don't really need the mutual aid. We send, we do mutual aid.
A lot.
Yeah. For, for other, for other squads.
Does everybody understand what that means? That they're really good with mutual aid. Just wanted to be sure. Any other questions from our council before they go into the budget?
Just out of curiosity, what are the levels? You said we're at paramed. What are the other levels?
So we have first responders. We have EMTs and we have advanced EMTs. And paramedics.
So we have six more. We just received a grant, correct?
Correct.
Yep. And with that grant, we're going to try to put six more people through the EMT course. But it's expensive and it's two years, right?
Yeah, it's two years and the grant, it's 100, for six people, it's about $100,000 to send them to school. But we received an education grant to help that.
To have to do clinicals. I mean, paramed level is really, really top-notch, so.
Sure. Jeff mentioned that a paramedic can go to a hospital and get $30. But I don't believe, does a hospital have a paramedic? If not, what would that job at a hospital look like? What, what level is provided, if that makes sense?
Hospitals are hiring paramedics. Urgent cares are hiring.
Oh, really?
Because there's nursing shortages. So a paramedic is almost, you know, is the equivalent of an RN. At school and everything.
And emergency.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah. So, yeah, North Country does hire, have paramedics on. I know in other counties, urgent cares are hiring them.
And that's the equivalent to an RN?
Yeah, they, yeah, there's skill sets.
Yeah.
They work under a doctor's license.
Yeah.
If you'd be hiring six other people and the training costs $100,000, are you expecting Newport to pay for it? And would those six people be basically limited to Newport? Or would these people be parachuted to Johnson or other places?
So these are, these are people that already work for us. And what I received was a 140,000 dollar education grant. So I'm using 100,000 of that to put these providers through paramedic school because they wouldn't be able to on their own. 15, 16,000 dollars, a lot of them can't afford that. So what we're doing is putting them through that. Four of them are permanently housed in Newport. Two of them are in Johnson out of the six.
What happens if they then decide to go, say, to another state or something? I mean, you've been.
So we have.
So I might let them go to their financial, to the budget because then we have like.
The only, the only extra expense there is that our, that AEM, AEMT that we have now goes up $2 or $3 an hour. It becomes a paramedic, then we have a much better service to provide for everybody here. So that's, that's, that's been our goal for the last 10 years is to elevate the service. Especially with the emergency room situation and the hospital. I mean, that's just, it's, it's a whole different thing than what it used to be. I think everybody's aware of that.
So if I need to run into your financial.
All right. Well, the financial thing, we were going to have solid figures for you tonight because we met with Coventry beforehand. Coventry is talking about splitting their town, which means there would be less, a little less money coming from Coventry, not a lot. But they are one of the towns that we contract with now. And it affects Newport City, Derby and Newport Center are the only ones in our group that it affects because we, we take, we have four different divisions. They're all, they're all have a different cost per person. And this district is the less cost per person because we have the most costs. Between Derby and Newport, Coventry benefits from that. Newport Town benefits from that. They were the original people in our, in our little group. So we have them pay. We, we, we treat that division as a separate business. It's a little confusing. We have four, four of them. So this, we're at like $38 a cap here and some of them are 50.
Yeah.
51. So this is the least amount. So, but anyways, and Coventry leaving, even a portion of their town would affect the budget. So I told them their timing was terrible because we had already done our budgets. So we went back and redid a budget, depending on what they were going to do tonight. Because they said they were going to vote on it tonight and we went there and I think there's a little confusion on. Once we explained to them the difference in the level of care that they would have, we would still be covering two-thirds of Coventry. They'd be one-third, but it's closer to Orleans. So they figured they'd be better served if somebody from Orleans was coming. And I said, not if you need a paramedic because we're going to come directly. So if it's a critical situation, we're going to get there really quick with a paramedic or they're going to get there a couple of minutes before us have to assess them and then call us out. And that could, that could be potential, potential life-threatening thing. So they couldn't make a decision tonight. So they did not make a decision, so.
Do we have any idea when they're coming?
I told them that their timing was already really poor and that by not making the decision, see the worst. Because there are other towns that rely on us to give them figures for their budgets. I can pretty much give you, unless they go totally off the rails and decide that all of Coventry is going to be serviced by somebody else, which would be stunning to me, but you never know. You never know. I do, I do have two separate figures for you. One, if they stay with us completely as they have. And one, if we only do two things. And probably neither one of them are, you're going to like a whole lot, but it is what it is. I mean, we're trying to provide the best service. So for Newport City, last year, I better check. If I can get to the right page. 2003. Two thousand and three, our invoice due was a hundred and sixty-three thousand, three sixty-four for the EMS side of it. And then, we charge dispatch a little different because once we went on with the city of Newport, they direct the cost for dispatch, and it's so much per call. So you guys probably know that because you're gonna, where you're gonna when you sit down to do your budgets. So it's so much per call, so that fluctuates, and they do it on a four-year average. So, the four-year average this year really bumped up for you guys. So last year, you paid forty-one thousand, two nineteen for dispatch. And the dispatch is sixty-two thousand, seven fifty-nine this year. And I can give you one of these, but... So, your total appropriation last year, between the hundred and sixty-three thousand and the forty-one thousand for dispatch, was two oh four. This year, we'd be at one sixty-nine. We're having a four percent increase, which is not unreasonable on our end, but the dispatch went up twenty thousand dollars. Which all goes back to Newport.
Newport.
City. Still, it's a, so our appropriation would be two thirty-two, six seventy-eight. Now that's assuming Coventry stays as it is. The difference, if Coventry decides to cut a third of their town off, would make a difference to the city of Newport of an additional eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. And I can give, I can give, so that would bring it up to two forty-eight seventy. And I can give you one of these. Make copies for everyone, because I didn't. As I said, I wasn't sure where we were gonna be at with that, so.
I'm asking this to Rebecca.
Yeah. So, but I wanna, I wanna just tell you that our, our, our actual budget to operate the facility went up, we, we went up four percent. And with the, what'd you say, twelve percent?
Yeah. I mean, our costs have gone up. I mean, twelve percent for health insurance. Workman's comp was twenty percent. I mean, diesel fuel, mechanic, I mean, everything went up a lot, and we were able to keep that to a four percent, even with trying to increase our providers.
Some of that was a help from COVID, because we had some COVID money, you know, so. So we try, we are, we are actually a nonprofit, so don't make any money.
And we struggle with reimbursement every single day. Mr. Wilson just sat with a meeting with me, with the state, and, I mean, we're, we're, we're losing, I mean, they cut every single day. They, anything they can do to insurance companies to, to pay less.
And our, our, so, I mean, I deal mostly with the finances, you know? Because when he starts talking about RLJ or something, I don't know what the hell he's talking about, you know? And I keep it that way, so I don't, I don't really need to know. But, we had that conference, and John, John came, and I thought that was, that was good because it was kind of enlightening, you find out that rural services everywhere are struggling. And they're struggling really bad. If you look at our thirty-eight or thirty-nine dollar per cap, depending on where we come out, we're way lower than most other places. You know, Rutland is fifteen...
No, Rutland, Morrisville is high.
Yeah, some of them are, some of them are really low, so. So we try to keep our costs down, even though it sounds like a lot of money here. We're up to about a quarter of a million dollars now, so.
Can I ask Charlie one question? I know it sounds a little selfish, but if you only receive mutual aid once all year, and you gave out mutual aid an awful lot, is there any way in which a charge could be made for the mutual aid that you wind up giving?
So we bill for those calls. So those, so the advantage is, so if the ambulance from the city of Newport goes to Orleans and does a call, whatever we can bill for that call is revenue that comes in. So that, you know, we did twenty-five calls, and we get, you know, a couple hundred dollars per those calls, that's four or five thousand dollars that I don't have to come to the city of Newport and ask for.
So it's already included in this estimate?
Yeah, we have to estimate it, what we're gonna think we're gonna do for call volume.
Well, that, yeah, that's, that's assuming that the person has some sort of insurance.
Insurance.
Medicare, Medicaid, or private insurance. Otherwise, you know, we pretty much eat it. You know? But that's, you know, that, the one thing we don't ask people when we leave is what, how are you gonna pay for this? We just go, and we deal with it after. The, the, the problem with trying to factor a budget is how many calls are you gonna have? What percentage of them are gonna be Medicare, Medicaid, and private pay? And the difference is, Medicaid pays a third of what, of what your bill is. Medicare pays about sixty percent, and private pay pays a hundred percent. So if that gets skewed one way or the other. So I, I have said in, in the meeting that we had with EMS, because they're talking about the state trying to help us out, I said, "Well, hopefully one of your helps is not Medicaid for all, because we go out of business at that time." Because you guys can't afford us. We'd have to come to you for a million, for a million and a half because Medicaid is dismal in what it pays.
Okay.
So, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have those figures?
Counsel, any other questions? And I gave the paper to Rebecca, who will make copies.
So we will let you know, because you're
Please.
in the process, and I understand that, as soon as they let us know.
Okay.
What's going on.
Excellent, and thank you so much for your information and for your service.
Thank you.
Madam May?
Oh, yes, Dr. Go, yes.
Charlie, so if Medicaid only pays sixty percent, I hope it's okay, please. If Medicaid only pays sixty percent, then do you eat the forty percent, or do you hope to get it from the patient, or?
No, we eat it. You can't, you can't bill it.
Why not?
Because it's not allowed. It's against the law.
It's a big, big fight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we take, we take what the state and federal government says we'll take, and that's it.
The next item on the agenda is discussion on hiring process for the permanent fire chief. Before we go there, I would like to thank the interim fire chief for everything that you've been doing during this interim, and his team. But I really do thank you, because I know there was just so many transitions and things going on, and people away, and so on, and you, thank you. Now, to your talk. So, can I have a motion first to start? For the council to direct the programs director to advertise for the position of the Newport City Fire Chief and authorize a specific expenditure, which we will get to in carrying out the advertisement? So I think we can start discussing.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. I have a motion for, to advertise. Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Comments? And now I would like to ask our interim fire chief to start to discuss the process with us of the firing, where we're at. And I'm gonna ask our programs director to jump in, and anybody else who you would like to help designate.
Yes, so I have with me...
Oh, I knew safety offered.
So I have tonight, I have our Lieutenant Chuck Newton, and we have Captain Andrew Druchet. If you don't mind, Mayor, I would like to have
Absolutely.
Chuck kind of address how the last hiring process went through, as he was involved with it more than I was.
Do you need me to stand at the mic or?
Oh, absolutely, because I'm being conditioned to be by the end of tonight.
So, you're the health, the health officer?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. My name's Chuck Newton. Been a member of the fire department for twenty-two years, and I was involved with the last hiring process. So I'll give you a rundown of kind of how that went, to refresh some memories. The first thing was that we needed to have an interim fire chief, kind of like what we do now. The difference at that time was that the city manager at the time said we would need to interview for the interim fire chief. So we, that's what we did. We came together, we, a panel of us that was made up of two firefighters from the city of Newport. We had a couple of fire chiefs, I believe Jeff, he left. I believe Jeff Johansson was involved in that too, at the time. And we got together, we came up with a list of questions that we would ask of these applicants. And these questions, you know, to be fair, were asked every single applicant. Panel members were allowed to ask follow-up questions, or clarifying questions, or questions that were related to the applicant's materials that they had provided, but that was our list of questions. We didn't branch off of that. That was approved by the city manager, and the applications came in, we reviewed them, and then we had an interview day where we sat where you're sitting right now. And the applicants came in, and we went down through our list, talked to everybody about that. At the end of that day, we made a recommendation for the interim fire chief that was provided to the city manager. And then the council actually interviewed that, two people that night, and then hired a permanent fire chief off of the, off of that. So, a little distinction there is that we had interviewed for a interim and then hired a permanent. This time around, I think a process that's very similar to that would work really well. There's been some discussion on who the panel members might be, which I don't necessarily need to, to bring out any names, but definitely, we would like to have some members from the fire department that we would select as part of that, of course, with the council's approval. But then also, maybe some other area fire chiefs or past fire chiefs, who would like to be part of that as well. As well as the police chief, I don't know if he knows it yet, but the police chief, Travis Bingham, is, is he still on? No, so he still doesn't know it. I'd like to have him be involved as well, because we, we work very closely with the police department. We have an excellent working relationship with the police department, with Travis. And so we feel that his input would be very valued. So that's kind of the, the, the process that we view in a nutshell. I did have a question. Well, first off, did you have any questions for me on, on that?
Any questions here? So I have a question.
Sure.
So, are you ready to put the panel together?
Well, we, we could. We, I mean, we'd have to certainly talk to a couple of people that, and say, maybe we'd like to actually formally say, "Yeah, we want to do this," instead of, you know, just discussions that we've had, actually formally put it together. But, yeah, we could do that. We're prepared for that. One of the, there's a couple of concerns, though, from the department, and make sure I'm accurate here and keep me, keep me straight, Kevin and Andrew, about the job description and that kind of stuff going forward.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have some real concerns about, I think the level that, you know, the chief is being asked to respond to. I mean, it's, it is a paid full-time position right now. It's basically paid at forty hours a week. It was kind of interesting that Jeff and Mr. Prano spoke about the pay, and, because we're kind of facing the same thing. You know, the chief is basically responsible for the city twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days of the year. Again, I'm not, no, I'm good. You look good up there, Charlie, I'm good.
Every time we stand, you get another.
And, and so I think, I think just bringing, and the only reason we're bringing this up is because we think that this should be discussed, I'm not sure with the council, with the mayor, about the new job, a revised job description going forward. That, you know, maybe the chief is on from seven in the morning till three-thirty in the afternoon, and then the officers perhaps are on call from three-thirty to seven. You know, in a paid position, I, I'm not sure how that's gonna work. I, I think that we're, we're at a point now where, you know, this job has been vacant for two, going on two and a half months. And locally, we don't have, you know, there's one person that I know that is seriously interested in it. I'm not sure that we have a whole pool of candidates that are looking to take this position. One, because of the pay, two, because of the hours and the responsibility. So I, I just think, you know, just being transparent with everyone, I think that we, we really need to revise how this position is covered.
And, and to your point, that's why we opened this discussion up. To get this out so we can, I think the council is looking to you to help us put together the appropriate description so we can figure out all of those issues, dollars, et cetera. And, you know, before anybody starts picking and choosing, we want your input, we want the panel, we want to sit down and get the actual job description. We want to come up with the appropriate dollar amount and the responsibilities, you know? So that we can advertise when the time is right to go. So, yes, that's why we're doing this. And it's your input that's so important, because I don't have that information.
Right, right.
You do, you're in there, and so we need that information.
Sure. So, the fire department, or a few members of the fire department, actually, the Corps of Officers did meet quite a while ago now, at the request of Ms. Gary. And came together with a few, knowing what, knowing what the chief position has been, with some recommendations of things that we think should be changed, updated, et cetera. And that was sent to, to Ms. Gary. I don't know where that information sits now. I don't know if...
I'm not sure.
No, we need to get that information. It's never been provided.
Okay, so, so there's a few things that I don't necessarily have to go over all now. I mean, for me, in a business, being, coming from a business world, this sounds like a really good opportunity for a working meeting. You know, with a, a city council member and, and some members from the fire department, probably. Because it's more than I think anybody wants to try to tackle tonight.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Yeah, this isn't the right, right.
This was not the intent to, this was the intention, get the information so we can set, we have to do a special meeting, or we just need to do an informal meeting first. That's what this was all about.
Yeah.
As I said, you're the experts, we need your information, so, because the council has not received any information.
Okay. Well, certainly, we can obviously share that with you.
Thank you.
It's an email, it won't take, it won't take long to send it.
Better sooner than later, as the interim chief agreed in two months.
I'm sorry, eight, eight.
I've, I've been...
No, that's, that's why we made this a priority, and we, I respect that.
Yeah.
But I also respect and thank you for the fact that you said you weren't just gonna like disappear.
One, one thing I will say, since Kevin took over the position, I mean, there's been a lot of other people involved, Andrew, myself, and some others
Thank you.
with, you know, trying to help out and, and, and basically keep, keep everything running really smoothly. Which, of course, is gonna happen anywhere. It's a team effort, really, to keep the fire department running as smoothly as it is. I will say that very few people in this room probably understand how much work it entails to, to run and manage a fire department. It's, it's more than a forty-hour-a-week job. I mean, besides the fact of fielding calls from people coming in off the street, or phone calls from people having questions, needing to go out to businesses and deal with their Knox box issues, going on inspections, and a plethora of other things, you know, equipment maintenance, apparatus maintenance, building maintenance, the list goes on and on and on and on and on. And that's just during the day. And then we have trainings at night, because all of our members work during the day, right? And, and we train at night, we have meetings at night, so that, that person that's doing that job, I mean, I don't know, what would you say, in reality, sixty hours a week is probably where we're at.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, it's, you know, it's nothing to get, obviously called as EMS. I mean, yeah, it's, you know, it's nothing to get, obviously called as EMS or called at two in the morning and at 10 at night, at seven in the morning, you know, you just, you just don't know. So, but, but we, I mean, we do it because we, we want to, we want to help, we want to serve, we love the community and nobody's complaining. But I think as the new, this is a great opportunity to revise the position, so.
And now have you started to put together your bullets so we could have that meeting sooner than later?
Yes, yes, tomorrow.
In all seriousness, I mean, yeah, we've, we've already met on this and we've, we've got a bullet list and some other things that we would want to, you know, as brief items and more that we can expound upon around that. And yeah, I think we'd be ready, just got to get the people together to do it because I think everybody's ready to, to go forward with this.
Mr. Walsh?
What are the residency, residency requirements?
So, I mean, at this point, we're saying that, you know, needs to be a city resident, needs to live within five minutes of the station, basically, to be able to respond in a timely fashion. I mean, we all, we all know how quickly we see the ads on TV about how quickly fire spreads and there's no exaggeration. I mean, so whoever is in that position needs to be able to respond within three to five minutes. I live, I live over by the hospital, I mean, I feel like I'm pretty close to things, but, you know, and still, it still takes a little bit of time to get out the door and respond being this close. But we're saying right at this point that needs to be a city resident within five minutes of the station.
Of the station, not the scene.
Correct.
Right, while the scene moves around.
Well, yeah, exactly.
Changes every time.
Yeah, exactly, that's my point. Because the chief, the chief has his, her own vehicle.
The fire chief has a city provided, what we call the chief's car.
Yes.
City provided vehicle to respond directly to the scene from home when there's a call.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at.
Right. So I, did you get the information you wanted?
I did.
That's it for me, I mean.
Any questions from the council?
We're ready to go forward.
So, and that's why I wanted to open this discussion up. So I think the, and jump right in here, my thought is that it's, the most important thing to do is to just get the motion approved to authorize the advertisement so we don't have to come back after we meet, right? And have the meeting or, and do all the points and not to delay it to go further and further down the road. We're not going to make any advertisements until after the meetings and we sit and discuss and then we'll meet with the council and possibly have a special meeting after the informal meeting and you get us the information. And if you could get that information over to Rebecca, myself, or John, myself, sooner, the sooner we have it. I'm available to meet and I know the president of the council will meet, I know Rebecca will meet, and then we can call a special meeting to have it more formal and sit down. But I think we need the information.
When is your interim part coming to an end?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks.
Last month, yeah. No, I mean, seriously.
And we're, we're just getting this now.
Yeah.
To go and advertise.
Yeah. So I mean, I took, I took over September 2nd. I had said hopefully November 1st that maybe you were going to change for me, but.
So my one question is this, even if you're semi-retired or whatever, the whistle goes off tonight, are we covered?
Absolutely, absolutely.
There will never be a point.
Similar to the military, but when you go out, there's always one person's in charge. So as he's stepping down and in a week and a half from now, you know, downtown, who's in charge?
So, well, and so that's why, just like in the military, we have a hierarchy of officers.
Yes.
We have, you know, normally, normally a chief, but in, right now, two assistant chiefs, two captains, and two lieutenants. And so we've already, we've had those kind of conversations and we communicate almost on a daily basis about if Kevin is unavailable for, for one reason or another, obviously he is interim, but if he's unavailable for one reason or another on the weekend or whatever, we all know and we know that so-and-so is going to be the OIC.
He still maintains, as he's no longer per se the interim, he's still in the hierarchy amongst you, so.
Yeah, so if one of us, if any of the officers, we have an officer app, we have an app on here that we communicate with the department. We all are very good about saying, you know, hey, I'm leaving town, I'll be back in two hours, is there anyone around? And then we notify dispatch. Yeah, there, there will never be a point, or never has been a point where the city will not be covered by competent personnel.
One last thing she asked.
Yep.
Whatever you gave before, we've never seen.
Right. So I'll make sure that that gets sent out, or Kevin will.
Thank you.
I think you probably have a copy, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. So I have a motion to authorize the council to direct the program directed to advertise with the position of Newport City Fire Chief, and I have a second. Ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the grants management contract with NECA and KCA anticipated vote, and Mr. Walsh is still here. So I recognize Mike Walsh so that you can please do your presentation. Thank you for joining us and thank you for staying this long. I appreciate it.
No problem, thank you. You've done a great job, keeping everything on track here. Pretty fast-walking agenda for the number of items to handle. NECA has presented a contract, I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, we're going to fix the sound and everything, so if you just bear with us for one second. I just said it with sound because I'm not technically savvy, so sound worked.
You getting it now?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I did that, no, just kidding.
So, thank you very much. NECA has presented a grant contract with Contract Management. As you know, NCIC divided that service for the town, for the city, for the leaders now. We did it for three years under the RSDI grant that was awarded by USDA. And then we had a couple of contracts with the city directly. NCIC at least has decided not to continue that type of service. For Newport, they are going to be doing some grant management, but have decided not to, yeah, continue the contract here. I am now working at Northeast Kingdom Community Action and wanting to try to continue the relationship with Newport and finish up on some of these grants. And that's why we come back for your consideration. This isn't a type of business that NECA has been involved in, but they have allowed me to make use of pension and would allow me to continue operating in the manner that we have for the last few years to try to wrap up some of these projects. So you've got a proposal. I have reviewed it with the mayor and I'm happy to try to answer any questions and would love to continue the relationship. And hopefully advance some of the things that are still outstanding.
Thank you. So, Mike, we have the sheet before us as well, which has a list of the projects that are going to be part of the contract and the management. And we've added the grants on here that we spoke about today. Did you want to identify any of those or if anybody, you know, do you want to just identify which ones that are on here? I think it might be easier for you to say that, or I know the press is going to want it, so I hold tight on to that.
The grants that are still outstanding is, we have been awarded a large LWC grant for Garter Park. And that grant has actually been suspended, but the state has reserved the funding subject to a new application. And what they really want to see is progress on the corrective action plan before they're going to consider re-awarding that grant. We also had a award from the Vermont Community Home Program, Alt Playground. So that's still outstanding, also in advance, and the Corrective Action Plan is implemented. And that Corrective Action Plan, the city voters approved $315,000 to implement. And that in itself is a process that needs to be pulled through. And I would be willing to work with Mike, Tom, and Becky to make sure that we can get that Corrective Action Plan completed so that those other two grants can move forward. Right now, the Causeway Streetlight, a bid, bid twice now. And so that's in the process of awarding the contract. And so getting through the construction phase and then the final closeout grant are something that would take place. So the grants are both MDRS and USDA. We also have a grant outstanding to improve the back signals at Bogenture Street and Lee Street. And that is a downtown community playground. And we would be able to get that project in construction. Frank has been working with the consultant on the BiLIVE Community Nation Grant. And you just received an extension on that. And we would work, we help Frank with the closeout on that project. You also just received an extension thanks to work of the mayor and other people on a wayfinding grant from Department of Transportation. That will be used with this part of the wayfinding grant from the city. And so that's another one we can get the funds completed, construction, reimbursement, and. And so those are the primary grants that I would plan to work on with the NECA.
Thank you. And yes.
Mike, how many of these grants that we had under NCIC supervision should have been further along now than they are simply because either you or NCIC weren't moving on them at a rate that you should have been moving on them at? I mean, it may be none, but I was just curious because we should have that information so that we know that you were the appropriate person to carry the grants forward.
That's a great question.
You ought to say that.
And to be honest with you, I don't need the full rest with NCIC or myself. There was a small incident that came about, COVID-19, put a stoppage to several of these projects. At least one engineering firm that we started with in the Conway Plaza went out of business. And so we started over and renegotiated the contract on that engineering. So then, and then the, what is it, the entire issue with the hotness of litigation at Garter Park certainly was the fault of NCIC. And so, I mean, there have been incidents that have come up that have postponed these projects, but they're all good projects. The funders have stuck with them and we should follow them through.
Yes, Chuck.
Did Mike say that he works for NECA now and if so, in what capacity?
Did you hear that question, Mike?
I did, yep. Right now, I manage their property. So they have about 20-plus properties with these kingdoms leased or rented. I handle all their lease arrangements, work on budgeting, and I also manage a company that they're responsible for related properties. And so this is a new, this would be a new business line for them.
Ms. Beale?
Hello, Mr. Walsh. My name's Jennifer Beale, I'm a city resident. So I understand that, that you used to work at the former company that managed these grants for the city of Newport. You've now switched employers to NECA. NECA does not have a history of managing these grants historically, so this is new work for them. As a resident, where I get worried is what happens if you don't like your new job and you decide to leave? Then we're going to be left with grants with a company that doesn't have a qualified person and no historical experience managing them. So does the contract in any way have some sort of a contingency clause that would allow the city to relocate to a different company with experience should you decide that, that your position with NECA is not to your liking?
I think that that's, for the case, there are termination provisions in the contract. So if this is unsatisfied, they terminate the agreement. And from that standpoint, they're only doing this because I wanted to see this build that continues for Newport. And they're not interested in continuing something if they weren't qualified to do
Any further discussion by the council? So I have, I have a motion. Can I have a motion that the council accept and enter into the Grants Management Contract with Northeast Kingdom Community Action?
I move to, excuse me, accept the Grant Management Service Contract between the city of Newport, Vermont, and Northeast Kingdom Community Action.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
One second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comment?
Is there a copy of this contract in the packet or are you sealed?
No, it's, it's with our, the attorneys at this point. And? Any further discussion here? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried. May I, may I have a further motion to authorize the mayor to sign that contract?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign that contract.
A motion, do I have a second? A motion and a second, any comment? Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried. Ms. Beale?
This man and mayor, now that you've voted on that, when will the document become public record? When can the press and the public get a copy of it?
As soon as I get it back and Mike and I both sign off on it, we will give you the appropriate document. So give us a couple of days to get it back from the attorneys and sign off. We have it in place, just that, at night, tonight, when we asked the attorney to email it to us, it wasn't time enough to print it out, so. But we already did, it's already, the draft is done. If you'll give me 48 hours, it's, I'm sure it's in my inbox, but I just don't have it yet.
So can, if it's in your inbox, can you email it?
As soon as it's signed. We both have to sign it. I have to sign off on it. Are you around tomorrow, Mike? If I send it to you?
I will.
Okay, good, there you go. Okay?
So you'll, you'll get me?
Yeah, you'll get it, you'll get it. I just need to print it out, sign it, and then have Mike sign it, and then it'll go. Okay, I just can't give it to you when it's signed. Because I don't trust that you'll sign it. Because I don't trust that you'll sign it.
What's that?
You might sign it. Thank you, Mike, and congratulations on doing that. And I thank you for working with us. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Programs Director Job Description. Do I have a motion to discuss the Programs Director Job Description?
I move to open discussions about the Program Director's Job Description.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
One second.
A motion and a second. Any comments? Yes, Ms. Bierling?
As it reads here, is that the same as what was posted online? I thought I read it differently.
Yeah, Programs Director Job Description is anticipated. Okay, so I think the purpose right now for my council members, and I'm going to ask to recognize after a few minutes, the Programs Director. But this particular job description was antiquated. It was years ago. And so I believe it was more light administrative focused, more, at the time, secretarial focused. And during this interim time period, I mean, this was way back. So during the interim timeframe of the transitions between the city manager and interim city manager, the Programs Director has actually assumed some responsibilities and worked in different capacities. So we identified that there's a need to revisit this and to, you know, define more clearly what this job description should be based upon, what the Programs Director has been doing now and our needs going forward, and what that Programs Director would need to continue until the new city manager is put in place. So, Ms. Tarian, do you want to kind of just give an update on what we're doing and what we all discussed? You know, we discussed and went through it and literally went through everything that Ms. Tarian was doing. And I thank you, because it was not an easy job. And so kind of give us an update on what you're doing.
So, yeah, so over the years, since I came upstairs to work here, I've taken on a lot more than what was in my job description, because it was more of a secretarial administrative assistant position before I was in it. So I've done a lot more with the budget and then just a lot of this. So we kind of went through, the bulk of this job description, I think, is still probably 90% of what was there. We just probably added stuff, maybe cleaned up some language in it, for the most part. And just made it a little bit more reflective of what I've actually been doing.
Do we have a copy of that for some reason? Oh, thank you. I thought I had one of those myself, but I just Oh, thank you.
Oh, so I borrowed it.
Oh, okay, so that's why I didn't see it. So I just want to, can I identify some of the points that we've, that are in this? Is that all right? We're okay with that?
Fine, go ahead.
So some of the specific duties and responsibilities, because Ms. Tarian has an accounting background, and she has been really working with accounting and the auditors and budgets. And we need that. We need that inside. And so she's been reviewing and approving the invoices. She's been facilitating and coordinating with city managers and the department heads on the actual development of the annual budget. She definitely assists in putting together these agendas. And if you know, we got a really big agenda tonight, and it was because of her hard work and her working really closely with me to say, we can add one more item, we can add one more item, and let's catch up on some business. And she worked really hard to do that. She also works with the auditors to complete the final audit process. And when I say this job description, it doesn't exclude the other people who have various roles in this job description and in this area as well. But there's a separation of duties. So we need a separation of duties in accounting issues. Because that's where you have the checks and balance. So I'm talking about the section that the Programs Director would be dealing with. And my concept is with, for the council as well, and Ms. Tarian, is that because she is doing this comptroller-style functions, you can't just have the administrative side. You have to also include in this job description, accounting and the budgeting, and be specific of reconciliations and what she's going to do. So she does maintain the fixed asset list and the reconciliations for various line items on financial statements. And that, to me, CPA, is very important, okay? Because we have the treasurer's office that handles X. We have Rebecca's position that handles Y. And that balance is important, because we have the income statement side and we have the balance sheet side. And it's very important that we don't just look at one, and we look at both and we keep the separation of duties distinct. She also will continue the posting of meeting notes and maintaining the website, also in conjunction with the city manager. So everything that's on this list is in conjunction with the city manager, of course. Okay, she serves right now as the first point of entry for the city manager's office. She will actually prepare and finalize reports, documents for the meetings that we have. She provides the confidential support for the budget tracking, agenda preparation. And she also is assigned the authority based upon public records requests. So she's the designated custodian at times, and that is a legitimate job. She works independently, of course, but she does prepare fiscal and statistical and narrative reports as assigned, and I have actually asked her for reports. And I have to tell you, they are forthcoming. They are, before I even finish asking for the next one, I have that one. And that is so important, and then I can share that information with the council. So I can turn around and say, here's a document, you should read this a little bit earlier, because in the next council meeting, we're going to be discussing this. I can deal, talk with the treasurer. We can actually get this information, and we can compare it. And it goes on and on and on to what she is doing. And most of these job areas are more comptroller, accounting, and less secretarial. So I can't say enough about what she's been doing, and I thank you for that. I really do. Because it was, you did it, and you just kind of, just did it. Never looked for any recognition or glory, just whatever you asked her for, she did. But this particular job, I believe, is important to the city, and I'd like to go forward with it. Any questions from the council? So can I have a motion to approve that it adopt the Programs Director Job Description as was presented to the council this evening? And that the description replace the Programs Director Job Description that's currently in place?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further comment? Yes, ma'am?
Why are you not using the title that's on the grant in the agenda packet? You keep on referring just Programs.
Well, because we're first going to approve it to that title, which is just what we did now.
But nobody's mentioned the correct title.
I said comptroller twice. Is that what you're talking about in my description?
Your motion did not.
Because my motion needs, is said exactly what we need, that it's going to be the adoption of the job description as presented to the council. So any further discussion from the council? Any further question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
So what's the new title?
It's Comptroller Programs Director. And I will give you a copy of the job description. That'll be posted up now that it's been approved, set up on the website. Next item is the Comptroller Programs Director Appointment. So we can just make this finalized. And I would ask for a motion to enter executive session to consider the appointment of Rebecca Tarian to the position of Comptroller Programs Director pursuant to 1 VSA 313A3, and invite Ms. Tarian to enter with us. So I have a motion?
Do you want to inject, I'll make that motion.
I have a motion? Thank you. I have a motion to enter into executive session for the appointment and to invite Ms. Tarian into that executive session. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and we are in executive session. Executive session.
I move to appoint Rebecca Tarian, Comptroller Program Director, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
One second.
A motion and a second. Comments? Further discussion? The reasons for this appointment? Ms. Tarian's responsibilities temporarily increased in May, and she has been doing a great job. The council wanted to make permanent the appointment and the assumption of the job duties in the job description. Ms. Tarian will continue to be responsible temporarily for some tasks until the city manager is hired. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Congratulations, and thank you for stepping up to the plate.
So Madam Mayor, what does that all mean? Where, where is it?
So where did you go to school to be Rebecca? No, just kidding. It means that Ms. Tarian is now going to be, her job description is formalized with the program, the job description that we just adopted prior, which will be up on the website. And she will show up for work tomorrow. Which is the most important thing.
I haven't seen the job description, so.
Oh, it's in the packet. I said I would give it to you, or it was going to be posted up. You can, we'll get you a copy.
Okay, fine.
That's why I read through it. I read through the files before so that everybody would understand what was going on. But we will give you the formalized one. We might have an extra copy. If it's not written on and you don't mind sharing it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the signature authorization for CAO 679 Amendment, Newport City STBP 2211, the Wayfinding Sinage Grant. Can I have a motion to approve the mayor as authorized signatory for that grant?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comment? Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item is new business. President Wilson?
None.
Councilwoman Charbonneau?
None.
Councilwoman Schon?
No, thank you.
Councilwoman Curtis?
No.
Ms. Tarian? Mr. Johnson? I have some, of course. The mayor was selected as the Chair of the Northeast Kingdom International Airport Committee at its meeting held on November 1, 2023. After that, the president of the council and the mayor then met with Vermont Transportation Secretary Joe Flynn to discuss the potential of Newport Coventry Airport Economic Development Potential and the benefits to Newport. We are going to keep everyone updated, and those meetings are going to continue. And they were extremely positive and favorable with the Vermont Transportation Secretary listening to what we needed and starting to review and move forward on that.
Are those meetings?
The mayor also The mayor is also pleased that in addition to attending the mayor's hours, emails and telephone calls to the mayor have been forthcoming. And these emails, like at the mayor's meeting, are really thoughtful and very beneficial. I would also want you to know that the mayor's update will continue to be sent and published in the paper. And that the president of the council has been attending these mayor meetings with me, and I thank everybody for showing up. In addition, I want to thank NKTV, because the mayor is now doing a short five, 10-minute update from the desk of the mayor, pun intended there, being taped every other Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. So if you will continue to send me issues there, I will do my best to adjust those as well. We're trying to get as many updates to you as possible so that when you come here, you, we can address everything in any format that we possibly can. The next item on the agenda is old business. President Wilson?
None.
Councilwoman Charbonneau?
None.
Councilwoman Schon?
No, thank you.
Councilwoman Curtis?
None.
Ms. Tarian? Mr. Johnson? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to have a copy of the paperwork that the insurance coordinator gave you.
Yes. Okay, sure. The next item on the agenda is to set the next regularly scheduled meeting for November 20, 2023 at 6:30 p.m. Have a motion? To set that meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. I do want everybody to please know that as we move into doing the budget, and we are going to be addressing the budget on future agendas, that there will be special meetings set. Okay, so, because it can't be done in the regular meetings, so we are going to have a series of special meetings to address the budget, which we're all going to be going forward soon. And now we have liaisons appointed. And so in order for us to continue with the timely finalization of the budget, because the treasurer needs to have everything timed as well, we will be having special meetings. The next item is adjournment. Do you hear a motion to adjourn?
Just to clarification, I think Kevin
I'm sorry, did I say something wrong?
I think Kevin's motion was to adjourn, not to accept it.
How are you then voting to second?
A how-to dude, Kevin.
You did well, because you asked for a motion.
I know, Jack. Don't always listen. It's all time. Thank you, everybody.